Bats.
Here.
Feiler?
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Heck.
Here.
Hetrick. Kaufman?
Here.
Fox? Palmer?
Here.
Chris Miller?
Here.
All right, we'll move right into the discussion items. Superintendent's report.
The only item I have tonight is I do want to say a special thank you to both Mr. Bats and Mr. Hetrick for creating the bus parking lot next door. There's a lot of hours and a lot of time that they volunteered to do that and saved the district a tremendous amount of money. And it looks phenomenal and functions very well. So it's exciting to have that finished for the start of the school year, so I just want to say thank you.
Are there any students or citizens that wish to address the board pertaining to agenda items on the scene? None? We will roll right down to personnel.
This one we're voting on, 5A, I'm going to approve the following resignation. Rebecca Skelis as a German teacher at high school, effective 8/25/23. Billis D. Ambrose, Ambrose U. Cole as an instructional parent education. I'm going to say as listed.
Heck will second.
Any comments? All those in favor of the resignations, give the consent by saying aye. Aye or a no? Motion carries.
5B, I'm going to approve the following employment as a Tulpahakken Virtual Academy teacher. Per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, Rebecca Skelis.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Amy, do you want to explain that a little bit for the public?
Sure. Mrs. Skelis is, she resigns as a German teacher at the high school. The number of German students that we have does not warrant at this time replacing that position. So Mr. Hammer did talk to all of the German students to see if there would be interest in doing it virtually. And so Mrs. Skelis has agreed, while she is moving on to a neighboring district, she has agreed to continue doing German on a part-time basis for us with the Virtual Academy.
And our German position was only part-time to begin with, and it's almost impossible to replace. 5C, I'm going to approve the following supplemental contract for the following extracurricular position as listed there.
Heck second.
Any comments? All those in favor, give the consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries.
5C, or 5CC is for the next meeting, I'm going to approve the following professional staff salary adjustments based on credit attainment according to the collective bargaining agreement as listed there. 5D, we're voting on again, I'm going to approve the following employment, Riley Kibach as an instructional parent educator at Bethel-Hutton Entry, effective 9/6/2023 at a rate of $16. Pending completion of paperwork.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
5E is for the next board meeting, is to approve the following on page 8, Sierra Ranch Burger for November 1st, 2023. 5F is to approve a supplemental contract for the following extracurricular positions. It has to be voted on tonight as listed there.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
5G, I'm going to approve the following mentors as listed there.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
No.
Feiler?
No.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
No.
5H, I'm going to approve the following volunteers for the remainder of the 23-24 school year as listed there.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
All right, moving on to policy. Mr. Heck.
So we're going to give second reading and final approval on the following policies. I'm going to say 311 through 612 as listed. And then B, we're going to give first reading, intend to give the second reading and final approval on October 17th, 2023, for the following policies. That's going to be 321 through 621.1 as listed. And then C, approve the deletion of the following policies. And that's going to be 327, 329, and 348 as listed.
All right, moving on to E, curriculum. Do you care about these?
Oh, yeah. 8A, we retroactively approved the agreement with School Valley Area School District for Students 210 TAST Agriculture Program for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Heck second.
Any comments? Did their program dissolve? Uh, we're going back.
No, so they have a, they opened the program, but they are allowing one of the seniors to finish our program. Since her last year, she's been here since freshman year, 10th grade freshman year. So they're granting an acceptance for that.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Scholz, can you take the board action right away?
9.0.1, move to approve an agreement between the Tulpahakken Area School District and the Lancaster Lebanon Intervene Unit 13 for physical therapy services for the year 2023 to 2024 school year.
Heck second.
Any comments?
Those are the calls. It's 144... $144.05 per hour.
But that's on a as needed basis?
That's on, yeah. They'll provide our services. So we have certain services that have, there's certain students that have physical therapy that, so it's a rate for service.
Is this for the sports or?
This is for students.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Fox?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
All right, moving into administrative reports. Everett?
Good evening, everyone. It is an exciting time of year because we have given our students the STAR and CDT assessment. For high school in particular, that is our Keystone areas, that is algebra, that is our lit, and that is our biology with a focus on math and English. So what we're doing this week is we are diving into that data with our teachers to drive their instruction, but also build intervention rosters where we can support students that need a little extra boost in those core subjects. We've been regularly meeting with our multidisciplinary grade level teams to support students with their behavioral needs and academic needs. It's been really good to meet with the teachers on such a regular basis to kind of get their perspective and their point of view on how we can support students. Lastly, we had our faculty meeting today for September, and we're starting to get into what we're calling our mission moments. It's kind of like our shout-outs, but kind of more driven towards our mission statement. So the purpose of these is to highlight students and staff who are exemplifying our mission statement. Expect, Believe, and Achieve. And this month, we are celebrating a young lady who did her absolute best on her assessments this week and actually made tremendous growth in a grade level or above grade level. So it was really good to see that she achieved all that. So, thank you.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So what did you call STAR assessment and?
CDT.
CDT, and what does that say?
It's the diagnostic test.
Okay, so will they come in day one, day two, they're tested? Is that how it goes?
Basically, the CDT will give you, it's, our algebra teachers use it, so it gives you the entire, we have a full CDT, and then we have a diagnostic category that will break up those math assessments into categories. We give the first full one, understanding that they haven't learned all of it yet. So we expect those scores to be low, but what we see with the CDT is after the teachers teach a particular amount with the diagnostic category, that's where we really start to assess the growth. And it directly aligns with the Keystone assessment, so it's a good measure. But pivoting to the STAR, we're seeing excellent results from the STAR assessment as well.
Ms. Parsons?
Good evening. We have been very busy the first few weeks of school. Mr. Hammer and I held back-to-school meetings with every grade to discuss discipline and attendance. Those meetings went very well. I'm also working with Kirsten Idris on attendance, making sure if there's any obstacle for a child that we can still get them in the building. We've made phone calls over parents, met with families, and have gone to houses. Also, tomorrow night, the FFA is holding a back-to-school event tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00.
Good evening. So it's been a great start to the 23-24, I didn't want to publicly correct the board president, but yes, one of my agenda items is that, yes, I do correct every single person, just to kind of change old habits because I know they die hard. But at the middle school, great start to the 23-24 school year. That initial stress and anxiety that, you know, students have coming back to school in eighth grade or entering middle school as a seventh grader has since kind of died down and been more relaxed as students get into their daily and weekly routines. Similar to the high school, the STAR assessment was done at the middle school level for the ELA and math. And I will be holding those data meetings starting tomorrow and Friday with the ELA math teachers to build those intervention rosters so that we can start Monday morning on September 11th. We have our first dance coming up Friday, September 29th. That will be from 7:00 to 9:30 in the cafeteria like years past. As someone that took over the United Way campaign, I'm proud to say that as a district, we raised $12,733 as of about an hour ago towards, that we put towards Tulpahakken families, the United Way. So very proud of that. And last but not least, similar again to the high school with the mission moments, we're doing that at the middle school level as well. And multiple colleagues now, their fellow staff members this month, for just coming in and getting started or being held by another district and leaving really, really thorough, high expectation like subplans in her absence to work with the co-teachers. So I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Leslie Paliac, Ms. Leah Hertel, and Ms. Heather Bolz. Thank you.
Hi. So I'll start off by talking about back-to-school night. We held it before the school year started, but it was an awesome way to kick up our school year. We had representatives from Burnville Library, Berth's Community Health Center, these sports organizations, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, and our PTO. It was just a really exciting event, and the kids were so excited, families were so excited to get started the next week. The start of the year has also been wonderful. We had a grand opening of our brand-new book vending machine at school right before Labor Day weekend. So each teacher the week before got a token. And so their job was to find one student and simplify Tulpahakken pride and our expectations over the course of the next week. They handed out that token, and then all of those students joined me for the grand opening and got to get a book from the vending machine. So that was really fun. We also had Burnville mean attraction and VCTC at our very first haircut event this past week. So we had 17 students come for a free haircut, which was an awesome opportunity before picture day. Looking ahead, next week, I'll be holding my first TV Connect session where I'm inviting families, parents, and guardians into school right before our PTO meeting for different sessions about things that are going on with their child's education. So our first session, I'm collaborating with our school counselor, and we're talking about school attendance. And so kind of similar in hand, I'm talking about the importance of getting to school and how we can partner with them in getting kids into our schools. Last thing, I just wanted to shout out our coaching team, which is made up of our math instructional coach, our tech coach, our instructional coach, reading specialist. They have been really working alongside teachers to conduct tests and look at the data from our first benchmark STAR assessments. And I just think they've been a huge support to teachers and really taking the time to problem solve and collaborate to, you know, help the rollout, so.
Stuff that we're to believe is only being with our students, it's been a heck big start, but I would say the best words to describe how our staff has handled it is composed, especially our middle school, our high school. Things are a little bit of this already, but the teachers are taking it strides and not making excuses for being the students and making sure they don't get one. So it's been really great to see that start to the school year. Tomorrow, we have the Wellness on Wheels from the Berth Community Health Center. They're coming out to our high school. They'll be here from 10 to 3, offer well visits and other primary care services. Last year, they were barely getting any of their slots, bills, available appointments, and they're almost booked for tomorrow. So it's great to see that resource getting attraction and getting into use. Another community partnership, JCPenney actually reached out to see if we were in need of any clothing, any donations, any living supplies for families that may be homeless, going through some hard times. So that's a relationship we're just starting, but it's great to see community resources like that coming, really stepping forward within itself, wanting to contribute to the district and the community.
Evening. So we had our first three days back with staff, the 15th, 16th, and the 17th back in August. And it was a really good three days to get things started. In particular, the 16th, that Wednesday, we had three sessions that staff rotated through over the course of the day. One was with our in-mind partners concerning trauma and kind of a practical approach to helping students who are working through specific brain states that they may be experiencing. The second one was a collaborative session that staff worked together on digging into motivation. And then the third one, Dennis and I co-conducted, focusing on the science of learning. And they got a little bit of exposure to 3D science learning and kind of a review preview of our literacy and math plan that we developed over the course of last year. So kind of a preview of what they can be expecting to see down the road. And then despite that full day, we got feedback from everybody on kind of how it went. Most of the staff indicated very positive that they felt like the sessions were practical and that they appreciated the intentionality that was put into them. So that was a win for everybody. I'd also like to recognize staff members who've really come forward to help build those connections with higher ed. So we have connections now with Alverny University in Coopstown. We have a bunch of prosem students who are working in both buildings, some from Alverny with Holly Jo Torres and Rob Stupnrowski. And then prosem students from Coopstown who are going to be with Becky Schlegel, Cara Kramer, Elaine Ferdinand is in Rachel Heim. And I also want to recognize the work being done by our reading specialist, Rachel Bowers and Karen Bonner, as they brought our Coopstown interns up to speed with Kaylee Sarr and Bailey coming on quickly. They're getting primed to start their intervention work in the next two weeks with our literacy. And then lastly, one of the goals of our literacy plan is to provide more ongoing communication about our literacy efforts. So at this point, our design committee that came up with the plan last year is now going to shift into a more permanent literacy committee that's just dedicated to the ongoing work. That's part of the goals in that plan. So that newly consolidated committee will be meeting before the end of the month to pick up where we left off last year to continue carrying things forward. And I'll have an update in October about kind of where we are there.
Ms. Berg?
Yes. Typically, I have one to two hours to prepare my history report during the meeting. I prepare Tim to do my report. I'm very prepared. I wasn't here in August. I was at the start of the year, SNAPA Conference, School Nutrition Association of Pennsylvania. And this year, the cafeteria managers from each building came along. It was at Calhari up in the Paco House. So we spent three days and two nights up there, lots of learning, team building, learning about leadership, learning about food. They really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed having them with me. Two years ago, I sat there and I realized some other directors had their teams with them, and I said, you know, that's all. So moving forward, they're really going to be happy to join me each year. After the conference, we had a back-to-school training with the entire department. We teamed up with Exeter and a couple other districts and did a six-hour classroom-style training. We went over civil rights for food service, school food service, allergies, food safety, things of that nature. Then right before school started, we got together just as a Tulpahakken group. We had a welcome back breakfast and a quick meeting together at the high school. I wanted to give a shout out to the junior, or the, excuse me, middle school, high school teams. As far as dividing up the middle school, high school under one roof, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happened with the food service department. Probably nobody knows about, the staff there worked with me, and we kind of just worked through each step. Matt's team in technology was, you know, helpful with that too. But they just had a can-do attitude the whole time, going, okay, guys, we're not exactly sure how this is going to work, but we're going to kind of see how it goes. And they were just super helpful, great attitudes the whole time. Today, I had a meeting with our slushy rep. The guys at the high school had been offering slushies to the students as an incentive last year, and we wanted to kind of get that in-house. And now that we're all staffed up, I was able to meet with, it's called 100% Juice or 100% Fruit, because the slushy itself was just basically a fruit juice that's frozen. Met with her today and realized that there are 14 flavors that we have to choose from to bring in. So instead of trying to read the students' minds, I decided to send a Google survey out. So I sent that out today. Got about 50 responses already. I think red bread or blue raspberry is in the lead, if you're curious. Like, I'm excited, you know, to kind of get that out there, get them excited about it, and when they see the flavor, you know, that we selected, that we, yes.
Heck, Sam thinks it.
Yeah. You can always come over at lunch. Have a nice simple walk. Last but not least, as I was walking through the kitchen today with the slushy rep, they had a red pepper sliced open, sitting on the counter, roast, it was roasted, it was cooling. And I said to Diane, who does the salads, oh, is that for the salads? And she said, no, that's for the hummus. You may not realize, make our own hummus in-house for the students out of government chickpeas that are provided us from the government. Never did I ever believe that on their own, they would be roasting fresh red peppers to jazz up the hummus. So just a little snapshot of the video was kind of.
All right, does anybody have any old business? Does anybody have any new business? Seeing none. Calendar events is listed there. Always excited to start. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board this week?
I just have a comment of what Mr. Rich said. I had a very nervous grandchild that started 7th grade. And you guys did an excellent job. From the orientation night, he came home, just with great anticipation. He worried about everything from the locker to, just everything he could ever have imagined. And he felt so much better. I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Yenser. He forgot, we used to go to church with her, and she remembered him, he didn't know her. But just the whole aura was just friendly, was just informative. And my daughter is a teacher, so she has rubbed shoulders with a lot of administrators, and she was totally impressed by you and how you ran it. So kudos to you. It was a, it was a great night and a great start. He loves it. He loves changing classes, and gets not nervous at all now. So thank you for all you do. You know, I don't think people thank you enough, but thank you very much. And everybody who was involved in making first days good.
Yeah, Professor, thank you.
I just wanted to, whoever organized our pep rally and involved the youth, the youth band, it was fabulous. The kids had a great time. All the youth sports went up. They were with our high school students, which was a lot of fun for them. Our youth band, Mr. Shrek does an amazing job. But he went up and he had, I have no idea how he even did it, had them even go out with their instruments with the marching band, had them perform with the marching band. I thought they did amazing. The kids were so excited about it. You know, Joey was a little exhausted from carrying his drum because he was a little weak. But they had, they had so much fun. They did such a great job. So I just wanted to compliment them on that. It was a really good time to kick off the school year, get out to see some of the sports, see some of the students and the coaches, and it was, it was nice of them.
Anything else?
I forgot the comment. I think I'm shocked that we're almost done at 7:30. I forgot the comment, but I just wanted to say to the, you know, when we look at what we do as school board directors and volunteer a lot of time, I just wanted to also say for Kyle and Matt to donate that time on the bus lot, that deserves a thank you because besides, like we said, save us a lot of money. That's a lot of time. You give a lot of time a year to come to all the meetings, go to all the extra meetings, then you donate that time to make the lot look nice and save money. And I know in the past, Bill, Oscar and stuff, they spent time down at Burnville to redo the playground and all that. So, yeah, I just wanted to give a public thank you to them for what they did, side volunteer time, saving us a lot of money. So thank you.
I'd also like to thank Besher.
Okay, I didn't know they did that. Thank you.
They helped us out quite good with that. We wrote them a card, top, top of that. Public thank you to them.
Yeah, definitely. Think of all of what we are Tulpahakken, you know, what we do, our communities, helping us to achieve.
Can we send them a card?
That was my, that was my intention, to have a card here for the couple places that helped us this half year.
Dennis, do you have anything to add as far as the board report or anything?
The playground tour that I started last weekend, I did want to thank Dennis Thursday night, stayed late to put events around the whole playground early before I was out of there while he's going home. So he started the day, he skid loader stuff twice now, but he's making progress. He did actually, playing, I still finished him this month. He said yes, so he's cruising right along. So that started, the guys did a heck of a job, especially this last couple months, clearing out the section of the high school that is going to be renovated first. We have storage crates up at the tennis courts that are not full yet, but they're slowly getting full. Couple of stuff to the brick, but they done a heck of a job clearing out. Everything is, for the most part, cleared out. A few things that will obviously get rid of, but we're ready to go, so. Wants to be the playground. And I guess the libraries, that's an interesting stuff. The board meetings, libraries are finished, carpet bags finished, got all the shelves back together. Tim is graciously helping puts the books back on the shelves. I don't envy him. He has a lot of books. But the libraries turned out really nice. Crew did a real great job with flooring and painting.
Is he following the Dewey Decimal System?
Absolutely. If only the boxes had been stacked in Dewey Decimal System at the beginning. Worked quite in order.
Is it still called the Dewey Decimal System? Is that still?
I mean, it's, call number wise, we're going by call number. I don't know, I don't know that they're the same thing at first, I bet.
I have.
Leave out the line, is it still?
It's the same idea.
It's not a card that long.
Just, no, yeah, no card.
They're collectible now, those card that long.
Repurposed in our maintenance.
I mean, going last, I don't have a lot to add that's different, but I do want to emphasize that if you look back at, not that I've ever ended, if you look back at last year's agendas, every month, we were starting to pave the road for the start of this school year, and every single person went around and could speak on something that we brought to your attention last year, gracious the guide your approval, and we have influence right now. So whether it be PD, academics and data analysis, the libraries, everything that we've worked, put in place is in motion. And we're excited to kind of see that come to fruition. And on top of that, being in every building that first week of school, and it, team effort, but it was a phenomenal start, and it was all.